We are out of executive session, and I'd like to reconvene back into the finance meeting. We have taken no action of anything in discussion in our executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn the finance meeting?
Motion to adjourn finance?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance is adjourned. At this time, I'd like to call the June 14, 2021 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will clerk please call the roll?
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hazel Time.
Present.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
A move that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 24, 2021 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Will clerk please call the roll and the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Request for council action. We have silver for finance. We have 21-115 budget amendments, 21-116 approve variance for 2020 state audit municipal court, 2117 2021 charter review recommendations, 2118 then and now CT consultants for the law department, 2119 amend salaries and benefits approval approve agreement, Medina TV technician operations position, 21120 extend lease agreement with Williams Scotsman's municipal court, 2121 establish municipal court planning committee ad hoc, 21122 amend salaries and benefits code 3101 elected official salaries, 21123 2022 tax budget, 21124 bids for job number 1089 2021 pavement marking program, 21125 bids for job number 1094 lighting East Reagan Parkway multi-purpose trail, 21126 Nowaka TLCI grant application for the parks and for the public properties committee, we have 21127 MCRC marketing discussion, and 21128 Ray Mallard Park capital bill grant. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The farmer's market is held each Saturday from nine to one. I was up there this past Saturday, and there is a very nice crowd for the kids' day of play, and people enjoying the ability to be outside. Main Street Medina is having the first Friday Medina on July 2nd from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and that generally involves some sales by the stores, some giveaways. Invite people to take part in that. The July 4th activities have changed a little bit with the COVID restrictions being lifted June 2nd. The fireworks are still going to be set off on July 3rd. All of the COVID restrictions are lifted, so there will not be a requirement for masks or social distancing. The twin Sizzler races will be back this year on July 4th from 7:45 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. All races start from the square. The July 4th parade will line up at the west lot of the Medina High School roughly at 3:00 p.m., and the parade starts from there shortly before 4:00 p.m., so we can get to the intersection of Spring, North Spring Grove and Liberty Street to kick off promptly at 4:00 p.m. Again, no COVID restrictions for those either taking part in the parade or spectators as far as spatial distancing and masks as were previously required. Candy may not be thrown from a moving vehicle. We're also asking all parade entries to display an American flag this year in honor of our Independence Day. We do not expect new restrictions between now and then, but if any new COVID restrictions are added, we will share that with the newspapers and on social media, so the public's well aware. Also, on July 4th, the Medina Community Band is planning to have a July 4th concert at the bandstand area instead of the gazebo. That lets them spatially distance a little bit more, as well as have more participants than they can fit in the gazebo. The downside to that is there's no lighting there as there is in the gazebo, so they're going to start at 7:30 instead of 8:30 because they need the daylighting to actually see the music. We're thankful to have the community band back performing again. Also thankful that the Medina outdoor pool opened on May 29th with no restrictions, as well as our splash pads, and Greenwood and Mallard Parks is the locations, and those are being well attended as well. And then last but not least, Sandy Davis is retiring from the city, and I have a mayoral proclamation I'd like to read. We tried to get her to come, but she was a little bit shy, so for those at home, you can see the proclamation, and it states, "City of Medina proclamation Sandy Davis, whereas Sandy Davis has faithfully served the citizens of Medina County in various capacities for over 21 years and will retire June 18, 2021, and whereas she was hired on May 24, 2000 as a clerk typist in the service department, and whereas she became administrative assistant in the economic development planning department on May 26, 2010, and whereas during her long career in public service, Sandy has made countless contributions, including obtaining many grants such as the $15,000 grant for ADA items for the Medina Community Rec Center and a CDBG grant in the amount of $37,000 for the Parks Department, and also overseeing the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, for the cities of Medina and Brunswick for the last number of years. Whereas Sandy was a member of Leadership Medina County class of 2013 and 14, and whereas the City of Medina by this recognition wishes to express its great appreciation of Sandy Davis for her service, loyalty, and dedication of the community on the occasion of her retirement from employment. And now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize and commend Sandy Davis for her years of devoted service to the City of Medina, and do hereby extend personal congratulations and best wishes for many more happy and productive years in the future and witness whereof. I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Medina to be affixed here too this 14th day of June 2021. Dennis Hanwell, Mayor." Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple of things on the agenda I'll address when we get there.
Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've worked with Sandy Davis for a long number of years. Sandy's been 100% reliable in things that I've worked with her. She's great to work with. She's retiring at the end of this week, and I'd like to extend best wishes in her retirement, and I'm gonna miss her.
Thank you, Mr. Tushka, Madana Misko Court.
Is that right? No. Not even close. Not even close. You had it right last time.
I know I did. It's very hard.
Write it down. There's nothing new to report from the municipal court.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, ruling official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick update on some commercial projects. The department continues to see building improvements, alterations, and new construction along North Court Street. New construction includes Taco Bell, Chick-fil-A, Jiffy Lube. Taco Bell started today. Chick-fil-A will start in the next week or so. Jiffy Lube's goal is to start the second week in July. Discount Tire, which is under construction, is expected to be completed by the end of July, and also the county court project started some minor construction last Thursday. That ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to repeat what the mayor and Mr. Huber have said. As the department director for community development, Sandy has been a critical part of the function of the three divisions within the community development department in the seven-plus years that I've been here, and I just want to thank her again and congrats on retirement, and thank her for her service to the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Walter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give the council and the public a quick update on a fire that we had at the Liberty Plaza Apartments. We were called to on Thursday morning of last week. This fire was in a multi-purpose building that housed the rental offices, a community center, the laundry area, and maintenance area of that apartment complex. When we arrived, the attic area of the maintenance side of the building was already heavily involved in fire and was beginning to spread to the much larger attic that was over top of the other portions of the building. Attic fires are especially challenging for us due to the open area and the large quantity of fuel that they have from the roof trusses and plywood, and stopping one of these fires requires putting firefighters inside the building and pulling down the ceilings to apply the water from below. This is a time-consuming, very strenuous, and hazardous work. As the council is aware, the Medina Police Department recently purchased four drones, and two of which have not only cameras but also thermal imaging capabilities, and Chief Kenny and I had discussed the possibility or the possible benefits of using drones at a fire such as this one, and I'm happy to report to the council and the community that he and his officers arrived early in the incident and were able to quickly deploy one of their drones, as you can see in the video. This provided us with both an aerial view of the fire conditions, and additionally, we were able to use the thermal imaging capabilities of the drone to see the heat signatures of the attic, which enabled us to more quickly determine where those interior crews needed to be placed and operating. The drone and the officers proved to be an invaluable resource at this fire. I truly believe that they assisted us in stopping that fire about where you see it there, which saved the largest part of that building. So I'd like to thank Chief Kenny and his officers for their quick response and assistance. Also, I'd like to thank the crews from the Medina Life Support Team from the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital. They did more than just provide rehab and some of those other things. Many of them are cross-trained as firefighters, and they assisted us with many firefighting activities as well early in the operation. I'd also like to thank the Airheart York Township, Lafayette Township, and Brunswick Hills Township fire departments for their assistance at this fire. And lastly, I know it probably doesn't need to be said, but it's a good time to say it. We're all aware of the unique collaboration we have here in Medina with the safety forces. The Medina Police Department and LST assisting the Medina Fire Department at this incident truly was something special to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to wish Sandy Davis a happy retirement and congratulate her.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I wanted to wish Sandy congratulations on her retirement and thank her for all her support over the last 10 years, and hopefully the next chapter in her life will be super fun and relaxing, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, we are under construction with our East Reagan Parkway multi-purpose path project. I want to let folks know that starting tomorrow, June 15th, the driveway entrance to BP, the BP Station 711 off of East Reagan will be closed for three days to allow for the replacement of the drive apron. Access to BP will be maintained via both the North Court Street entrance and the rear entrance by the north-south alleyway there. And I also wanted to jump on the bandwagon. I think I've worked with Sandy her entire 21 years here at the city. She's always been fantastic. She will be missed, and wish her and Bill well in retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report, but I too worked with Sandy for a long time since I started here. She's been great, pleasure to work with, always professional, very funny, if you know Sandy. Wish her the best in her retirement with Bill, and she'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. In my haste, I elected to do reports of standing committee, and Mr. Shields informed me of that, so reports of standing committees. Finance Committee met prior to council this evening. We'll get them meeting in two weeks. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties has a meeting tentatively scheduled for July 7th, time to be determined. No other action or report tonight.
Special legislation, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I plan to schedule a special legislation meeting within the next week or week and a half to talk about two proposals that are pending. One is the proposal on demolition. The second one is the issue of feral cats. I have a great group of community people I've been working with, and I think we're fairly close to kind of wrapping that up, and at the same time, I have returned back to the broader issue of issues with wild animals, not domesticated animals, and am looking at that as well and hope to add that, be able to add that in the meeting in the next week or week and a half.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Water and utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled and nothing new to report. Do you want a strategic plan update now or during council?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Strategic plan update, my section is balanced development, which is great and easy because we already have a healthy mix of residential, industrial, commercial in Medina, so we're doing a good job with that. We also have the TIF, which for people at home that don't know what that is, it's a tax increment financing subsidy that you use for community improvement projects, infrastructure redevelopment. We also have, as Mr. Gladys said, the reported new builds, so we're in great shape.
That's good. Good. And finally, emerging technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. During the finance meeting, the Charter Review Committee presented a proposal to add a emerging technology advisory committee. It was well received. I think that it's a very good start. I saw a few things that we could do to improve it as far as the people who are on the committee and the scope of it, so I'm going to be scheduling a meeting here in the next few weeks so that we can review those and come up with a good plan and then present it to council for review and vote.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointment. We have one for the Cemetery Commissioner, Susan Hare, for a term expiring 12/31/23.
Move to approve the appointment?
Second.
Any discussion on the mayor's appointment? Will clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayor's appointment?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notices, communications, and petitions. We have one for a liquor permit not to object to the transfer of C1, C2 permit from WJF Investment Corp. doing business at Medina Marathon 429 South Court Street to Metal Petroleum LLC doing business as Medina Marathon 429 South Court Street.
Move now to object?
Second, not to object.
Discussion? Will clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero, one day.
I'm finished, Mr. President. We have not an introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meetings determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, nobody. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 9021, ordinance 9121, resolution 9221, ordinance 9321, ordinance 9421, ordinance 9521, ordinance 9621, ordinance 9721, ordinance 9821, ordinance 9921, and ordinance 121.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings for tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules for three readings?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Resolution 9021, a resolution commending Sandy Davis and her dedicated years of service to the City of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. At this time, I'll read the resolution since Sandy's not here. It's a resolution commending Sandy Davis for her dedicated years of service to the City of Medina, whereas Sandy Davis has been employed by the City of Medina since May of 2000, and Sandy Davis has faithfully and conscientiously served the city during the past 21-year period. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council hereby commends Sandy Davis for her years of dedicated service to the city, serving in the service department, planning department, community development department, and as a grant writer for the city. That Medina City Council hereby extends its sincere thanks and appreciation to Sandy Davis for her commitment to the city and the community, and wishes her good health, success, and prosperity in her retirement. That assigned competence resolutions shall be presented to Sandy Davis in recognition of her dedicated service. That this resolution shall be in full force effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution 90-21 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9121, an ordinance authorizing a job creation grant payment of $33,717.45 to Standard Food Corporation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to authorize the job creation grant payment to Standard Food Corporation for tax year 2020 in the amount of $33,717.45. This is actually for two different grants. These grants were a result of two expansion projects in the warehouse production and employee welfare areas, as well as investments in machinery and equipment. So the first grant is JCG04, which was the dry warehouse expansion project from 2012. That portion of the payment is $22,500, where they met their goals. The other one is JCG12, which is the production expansion and machinery equipment project from 2017 in the amount of $11,217.45, where they're at about 97.5% of the goal. And as we discussed at the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, due to COVID-19, the food service side of the business was impacted, hence the company needed to become more efficient, so they're hiring higher skilled and higher paying employees. At the end of 2020, they were at 563, and additionally, since this year, as of May 15th, they've already hired another 108 in the production area, and they still need to hire another 30 more. So with the COVID-19, they were also struggling to hire additional employees due to increase in extended unemployment benefits at the state and federal level, so they had to implement hiring bonuses, referral bonuses, and also through the bargaining unit, they did agree to wage increases for all their existing employees, which will result in a significant income tax increase for the city. Additionally, the company is considering additional projects and expansion plans that they've shared with us over the next one to five years, but I think we'll see the bulk of that in the next one to three years. So with that said, they have put forth a tremendous effort to hire workforce and grow the company in these challenging times, and we're respectfully requesting council to authorize this job creation grant payment. And as a reminder to council and the public, the job creation grant payments are funded through non-income tax generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 91-21 passes seven zero.
Resolution 9221, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance from the Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Housing and Community Development in connection with the Small Cities Fiscal Year 21 Community Development Block Grant CDBG program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program grant. We've done this for many cycles, used the dollars out of this grant to help fund improvements within the community in targeted areas, LMI areas, and also for targeted populations. This is another cycle of it, and on the information that's been provided, there's an outline of the various activities and the costs for those activities associated. This is a two-year program, two-year grant, so it would start, it would be called PY21. It would go 21, end of '21 to almost the end of '23. The emergency clause is requested because we have to finish out the application, which is due on the 16th of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further question or comment on the resolution emergency clause? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Resolution 9221 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9321, an ordinance establishing a Medina Municipal Court Special Projects Fund pre-trial drug testing, fund number 157.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a fund that we have to have to account for monies that the court is going to collect from defendants.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 9321 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9421, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, for marketing and solicitation services for the Medina Community Recreation Center. So move?
Second.
Discussion. Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, sir. This is on behalf of Jansen, who's not here this evening. The ordinance is for authorization to solicit for RFPs for marketing and solicitation services related to a donation recognition program for the Medina Community Recreation Center. The previous sponsorship contract expired on April 30th of this year, 2021. The REC Advisory Committee reviewed and recommended this to come to council for approval on May 13, 2021, and I'd respectfully ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Ultimately, my employer also benefits from this, so I'm gonna abstain.
Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Abstain.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 9421 passes six zero, one abstention.
Ordinance 9521, an ordinance authorizing a mayor to enter into an agreement with American Structure Point, Inc. to provide right-of-way acquisition services for West Smith Road Phase Four project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city entered into an agreement with American Structure Point about 18 months ago for the design and engineering for the West Smith Road project. We are now at a point in ODOT's project development process, we are authorized to begin right-of-way acquisition. This amendment to their contract will allow American Structure Point to engage OR colon to perform those services for us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 9521 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9621, an ordinance amending section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to patrol officers in the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to amend section 31.05 of the Salaries and Benefits Code to increase the patrol officer allocation from 29 to 32. This is an increase of three officers, and will be paid for by contractual revenue from Lafayette
and will be paid for by contractual revenue from Lafayette Township for two of the officers and McDAC grant funding for the third officer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
No.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordnance 9621 passes 6-8, one day.
Ordnance 9721, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a municipal court conceptual design agreement with Branstad and Carroll, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is going to permit us to enter into an agreement not to exceed $15,000, half of which comes from the court's Special Projects Fund and the other half from the city's capital improvement fund. And it's to look at the needs of the municipal court within the 1969 Common Pleas Building. My plan is to then meet with court staff, including the judge and his staff, the clerk and their staff, as well as the librarian of the law library and make sure everybody's needs are being addressed. We understand and appreciate this is probably going to take a variety of variations to get it from start to where everybody's needs are satisfied, at least as best we can within the available dollars. And this lets us plan and work through this in the time that the county's building their new courthouse, which they're estimating to be about 24 months, so that we're ready to go once the building becomes available to us.
Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordnance 9721 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 9821, an ordinance amending Section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Parks and Recreation Department Tree Care Technician Pay Grade.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to upgrade the pay grade for the full-time tree care technician from 31A through F to 34A through F so that it is in line with the MEO classification pay grade in our current pay scale. With the purchase of new equipment that requires a commercial driver's license, extensive field training and certification opportunities, it has become apparent that this position needs this classification change. This was approved by the Civil Service Commission as well as the change in the job description. And the increase is going to be funded with Department Kerry Ford.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Ordnance 9821 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 9921, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, some were lawfully appropriated and the funds satisfied the obligation and sufficient funds currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to pay a vendor and it's to then announce of the emergency clauses because the work has already been done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordnance 9921 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 121, an ordinance amending ordinance number 21720 passed December 14th, 2020, amendments to the 2021 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are amendments to the 2021 budget to cover expenditures.
Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordnance 100-21 passes 7-0.
Council Comments? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to wish Sandy Davis much health, prosperity and enjoyment in her retirement. She sure deserves it and she was a pleasure to work with. I always enjoyed the smile on her face and as Nino said, her sense of humor. Other than that, everyone just be kind to each other. Thank you.
Additional council comments?
Of course.
Mrs. Hazelton?
So, there's two events in June that I wanted to use this as a teachable moment for the community and share a little bit. Of course, June is Pride Month and I don't think a lot of people understand what Pride Month actually is. Pride Month commemorates, commemorates the Stonewall Riots where police raided the Stonewall Inn, which had become a safe haven for the LGBTQ+ community. At the time, it was illegal in almost every state for restaurants to employ or allow homosexual individuals into their establishments. So, that night, the LGBTQ+ community, they took a stand and they declared that they were going to be in charge of determining their own identity. So, as a result, you will see lots of events are held during Pride Month. Three presidents have declared the month of June Pride Month under three different administrations. But basically, it is a celebration of what the LGBTQ+ community has made an impact on the world. So, that is why Pride Month is Pride Month. The second event in June is Juneteenth, which is this Saturday. Again, this is something that has not been widely taught in history books. So, a lot of people are not aware of what Juneteenth is. Juneteenth celebrates the emancipation of slaves in the United States. Now, you would think, okay, the Emancipation Proclamation was in 1862, but this was actually when word filtered down all the way to Texas. So, the southernmost part of the United States finally reached that when the Union Army General Gordon Granger proclaimed freedom from slavery in Texas by reading the announcement of General Order Number 3. So, those are your two informational things for today. So, please take a moment this Saturday to recognize the importance of that and all month long for Pride Month. I did want to congratulate Sandy Davis on her retirement and a big thank you to all the firefighters, the police force, all of the life support services for their quick response on the Liberty Plaza fire. Unfortunately, most of our recent fires, and correct me if I'm wrong, have been in Ward 1. So, I am very thankful for the expedient service that we received from all of these different agencies. So, thank you very much.
Any additional council comments?
Go first. Okay. Just two quick things. One is I want to thank the fire chief for his explanation, explanation about the fire. But mostly his explanation, I think, and comments about the importance of collaborating and how working together, you really get good results. And we talk about it a lot, just in general terms, of how we work together as council administration or how we work together with the townships. But, you know, your explanation really showed how working, you know, the fire department, working with the police department and with other departments, how it really helps to change the outcome of very difficult issues. And it's important to understand that and it's important that the community understands the benefit of that, of that kind of intensive and thoughtful cooperation. So, I appreciate your talk tonight. And lastly, I want to thank the Charter Review Commission for their work. We are, we are fortunate that we are a community that is, is really rich with a sense of public participation. And the work that the Charter Review Commission did is just an example of that kind of work and the importance of having public participation at that level and we are really fortunate to have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to thank Sandy for her years of service. I was, I've been on the planning commission for 12 years and she's been there just about every meeting. It's, sometimes it's like herding cats, but she keeps us in line. She's done a real good job and especially keeping you in line, Jonathan. But she will be missed. She will be missed and thank you for everything, Sandy. There have been a lot of comments lately and first of all, I'd like to thank the voters for the May 4th outcome. It was a hard-fought battle. It was fought against a team that called themselves Stop Government Waste. And I'd just like to let you know how much Stop Government Waste has cost the city in legal fees, $63,000 so far. And that's over and above Greg's salary and his department's salary. These are dollars that we had to spend on outside assistance. We were, we were sued about the ordinance to put the, put the courthouse in play with the city playing with, working with the county and the judge ruled in our favor. They appealed that case. So, now it's still in the appellate court someplace, still in the appeals area someplace. And if I don't use the legal terms properly, I apologize. Another one was they, they opposed the ballot language that was put on the ballot for the May 4th election that you voted on and voted for the city to participate or to take over the 1969 courthouse and move our municipal court there. The Supreme Court of Ohio ruled in the city's favor. And then the last one, there's a taxpayer lawsuit going on about some meetings that were held and that right now is going through the process. There's some, I don't know exactly what to call them. I'll just say legalese going on that's trying to stall or slow down the case. And this is, this is where your tax dollars are going for something that the city has said you want. So, look at who was wasting the government money. It's not the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I have one. I'd just like to read a letter that we received from Ned Simpson and Paul Ryan, who are both co-executors of the estate of Howard C. Ward Jr. The letter reads, enclosed is a check for $75,000, which Howard Ward Jr. wanted to go to the city upon his passing for Christmas lights and decorations on the town square and if desired, the immediate contiguous business district. This is what I have come to understand the family's Medina history. Howard Ward Senior, his wife Carrie and their son Howard Jr. moved to 221 North Broadway in 1937. I've enclosed a photo of the house from 1950. A 1937 picture shows Carrie Annette Bell in front of 221 North Broadway after the death of her husband, Dr. JW Bell, is also enclosed. The Whittle Bell moved into part of the house that had been the doctor's office and the wards occupied the residential area. Howard Bud or Buddy graduated from Medina High School in 1941. Shortly after the graduation, Howard joined the Navy. I've enclosed a picture of him from that time. Howard never married and had no children. My sister, Howard's niece, and I are the closest remaining relatives. Although Howard spent the rest of his life after the Navy in Schenectady, New York, where he had a career with General Electric, there remained a tie to Medina. His father passed away at 221 North Broadway in 1970 and Carrie sold the house in 1979. Reflecting on his Medina ties, bequests were also made to Medina Methodist Church, Medina Masonic Lodge and a Medina Masonic Home. It has been disappointing and rather frustrating that it's taken so long to work through the questions of the surrogate court to get to this point. It is, however, short time and context that we will long remember Howard. So, we appreciate the gift that Howard, bequest that Howard made to the city of Medina and we definitely, you know, will honor the $75,000 for Christmas lights and Christmas decorations. And I know Mr. Pacoli is very, very excited about this bequest and hopefully there'll be more bequests coming. But again, we thank, we thank Howard, we thank his family and most of all, we will honor his bequest. Oh, thank you, Mr. Simpson. Just as a reminder, there will be a budget meeting on Wednesday this week at 5:30. We will continue the budgeting process and hope people can attend because they are always exciting and they're always important for the city.
We can see how we spend our money.
That's correct. With that said, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.